Good evening. We welcome you here at the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We call our meeting to order. We note that we have all council members present. We'll begin the evening with an opening ceremony. We turn to Councilmember Lars Nordfeld.
Will everyone please rise with me to repeat the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then we go next to our approval of the minutes of August 22nd to the council for a motion on the minutes.
May I move for approval of the minutes of August 22nd?
Second.
Property before us, any discussion? Seeing none, and to us... Oh, let's see. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Let's see. Oh, the August 29 special meeting. This is the one for the Board of Canvassers, or however we term that. So we approve those minutes. Okay, we'll do that separately. I guess you should have done together, but...
May I move for approval of the August 29 special meeting minutes?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously as well. That's taken care of. Now we go to our awards portion of our meeting, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFR award. And Mr. Coleman is here, and so we'd invite him forward.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. It's a privilege to be back. I was here just in June for your budget award, which you've received 25 consecutive years. And before I go into that, I'd like to say you have one of the only sound systems I've ever heard in a city council room that's excellent. So having spent almost 25 years in Bountiful, where you can hardly hear even from the front row, this is a great system, for what that's worth. Again, I was back here... I was here in June and presented an award for your budget, which you've received for 25 years, and that's a lot of work. The Certificate of Achievement is a little different award. That's for your financial report that you issue each year, and it's often called the CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And you've received this award for 24 consecutive years, and I believe that's one of the longest-running consecutive awards in the state. There are two or three that are a little bit longer, but it's a very commendable record. So the Certificate of Achievement program has been going on since about 1945, and it was established to help entities try and be more transparent, try and do a little better job, go beyond the minimum. It's not necessarily to assess the health of an organization, but to make sure that there's enough data and information provided there that the readers of the report can assess for themselves, whether the organization is healthy or not. So tonight, the award I'm presenting is for 2016 Financial Report, and it represents a very high level of professionalism and support that starts with you folks on the roster here and goes on down to the staff. And they can't do it without you. It's a huge amount of work, having worked for a city. I know that it probably increases your report size by double or triple at least because of the amount of data that's contained therein, the amount of work they have to go through to check all that data, make sure everything's right. It's a huge undertaking. So on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association of the U.S. and Canada, I'd like to present this award to West Valley City and particularly mention Don Gru, Nick Hales, and Talon Meek. So if they come up, I'd be happy to present this to them.
Certainly, that's quite an accomplishment for our staff and the great work that they do. We appreciate that. Thank you very much. Let's see. Next, we go to our comment period for public comment, limited to five minutes per person. And this is a... not a debate. It's just a time for an individual to speak. And so we'll invite those who have signed up first, and so Kelly Bertas.
Mayor of the city council, thanks again. It's getting to be every two-week thing. Sorry, I just dropped everything. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak again. Last week, there was some... or two weeks ago, there was a topic about a mobile home park and animals dispute. I was really pondering what was answered by the city manager, Mr. Pyle, of being that sets it's in a mobile home park in West Valley City. The jurisdictional part doesn't kind of interferes with officers to be able to go in there and do their job, to take care of this. That don't sit well for me at all. For one reason, if there was a crime going on, they're a police officer. They should be able to go in there and take care of the crime, even if it's a crime with animal control. Then let's get the animal control in there. These guys are citizens of West Valley City. It don't matter. If you wanted to come in my yard, you'd just be able to barge right in and do it. Because I had that happen to me a week and a half ago by one of your officers. My neighbor was in medical need of aid when I seen some officers going to her home. I called her. She offered or asked me if I can come and give her aid, because I am a medical responder. I was greeted by her police officer and pretty much told if I stepped any further, he was going to arrest me and detain me on my own yard. Again, it took seven minutes before an officer would even check on this person. And if anybody of you that knows anything about medicine, a person could die of a blood wound within a minute. Took seven minutes before she even was checked on. This is wrong. I've done many trainings with police officers involved, also fired. I've done a lot with the Salt Lake Fire Alliance and the military and a lot of stuff. This is what they train for. But we got to get off our high horse of saying, "Crime scene, or is it a medical scene too?" There's no reason to take seven minutes to get somebody in there to check on this person. It's totally unacceptable. And a week later, I want to ask you guys, each one of you, and even our police officer who's up here now stepping in, because I wish the police chief was here. Are we police officers or are we parking attendants? I was coming home from teaching medical classes on Wednesday night, and you saw I had a concert. Some guy went ballistic on me, threatening to take my life, and yet your police officer wouldn't do a damn thing about it. He said, "I didn't see it. There's nothing I can do." Now, he's in a police uniform, West Valley City Police. He's wearing a gun, and he's wearing a badge, and he's wearing all this stuff, and he's got his fancy cop car with his lights there. Is he a police officer, or is he a parking attendant? If he's working subcontracting and doing a job and not on the payroll of your protocol, get him out of his uniform, put him in a yellow vest, just like any other parking attendant, and let him do that on not being paid or being able to use your police cars. This is a crime that these guys are using these things for their own personal gain. Now, what's more important? Somebody's want to take a life. You know what? I'm a concealed carrier too. And if that guy would have even come at me at any time, I could have taken a life, that quit, because this man threatened my life, and yet a police officer wouldn't do a thing about it. That's a shame. And I hate to say that, but we need to step up to the plate. Make them be accountable, and if they need more training, please do it. I got a form for complaint for him. I'd rather see the training instead of complaints. Let's get these guys trained. They are there as a public service, and yes, they are 24/7 officer. They sworn an oath to serve and protect, not be a parking attendant and a meter maid. I'd also like to talk again. I brought it up two weeks ago about the turning lights on 6000 West, both 4100 South and 35th South. I missed the 4100 South, thinking that there would be one there for the school zone. One car per light during the school day gets through there in the early morning and afternoon. Now yet you've got a turning lane to head south or north on 64 heading westbound. Why can't we get DOT to put a light up? And again, put one down on 35th. It's one of the most heavy, busy traffic roads you'd find in our valley. I would wish that you would see through to that. Also like to follow up and see what was ever called to DOT about the weed control on Mountain View Corridor. Those weeds are getting big, big. There's a few trees that are pretty tall now. Parking on the streets, on a public access street, how many cars are allowed into each family dwelling? These things are combined family dwellings, it looks like. And like I said before, they're endangering people because you could not get a fire apparatus down there sometimes. I wish that we could get code enforcements. I'd like to know where I could even find the code to be able to understand more about what the laws are. Again, that's public safety, but I hope that you guys can look at some of these issues and check into it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shelley Trueser?
Thank you. I represent ET Technologies, which is the facility at the landfill that is creating some odor issues that I'm sure you've heard about. Anyway, the mayor has informed me that this is not a give and take, but if it's appropriate, I would certainly be happy to answer questions. I'm not able to stay for the entire meeting, but then another time I'll stay and can talk to you after. And I've also given you all my cards, so please feel free to call me. Anyway, just wanted to hit a few high points from the fact sheet I've given you. And I'd like to email this to you as well, which I'll get your emails off the website and email it to you. We had a great meeting the other day with Mr. Pyle. He helped us understand better. I mean, we really... we should have been communicating better with you all along. I apologize for that. We're going to do a better job in the future. Mr. Willardson has been great to communicate with us and keep us up to date on some of the complaints that come in and maybe help us try and figure out what we can do to help this. So anyway, it's at the landfill. It's 40-acre facility. Takes the two that you think the most of or that are the most common are the municipal solid waste solids, bio solids are what they call those. Those are the ones that smell. And then petroleum contaminated soils. And so some of the bugs from the municipal waste solids will combine with bugs in the contaminated soils to reduce the contamination in those soils. And what we do with those and with other products we take is through that process and through other processes we have, we make a topsoil that then we provide to the landfill free of charge and actually place for them. So we provide daily cover to the landfill. So that's a benefit. We also divert waste from the landfill. So anyway, we pay a fee to the landfill of $320,000 a year on average. So we divert waste. We provide them, you know, a product they can use and place the product for them, and then we pay them a fee as well. So we feel like we offer an important service for the landfill and for entities like yourself that use the landfill. But let's talk about odor control for a minute, since that's the subject of the day. We have tried a lot of things, and I know there's frustration in the city about the smells, and I get that. We feel some frustration too, because we have been trying to address this issue. What we do is we require the municipal wastewater treatment facilities to put a deodorizer on. We recently, just in July, increased the amount they have to put on. We doubled it, and we audit them, so to make sure it's actually happening. We have an odor misting system around the perimeter. We had some trouble with that in July, electrical problems. It's around a 40-acre facility. It took a while to track down exactly what was going on. And then probably most significantly, we actually reject wastes that we think are high in odor potential. We turned down, for example, the... there was a yogurt manufacturer that wanted to bring their waste to us, and we said, "No, that's not going to work." We didn't take that. And we have turned down about a million dollars' worth of business over the last year when we were to try and reduce the odor issues. Then we apply odor control chemicals to the waste as they're at our facility. And so we're cautiously optimistic that our odor control issues, our efforts are working. In July, as I mentioned, our perimeter misting system was down, and we had complaints on nine days. In August, we had two things changed. First of all, one of our municipal wastewater treatment plants, South Valley, we told them we would no longer be accepting their waste because of the odor issue. And we actually, because they only had an alternative to take their waste every day except one day a week, we are still accepting their waste that one day a week because they have to put it somewhere. So we reduced their waste by 90 percent. And then we got the perimeter misting system up. So in August, there was only one day of complaint, and others have told me there's a distinctive smell, and I don't doubt that. But that also was a day when the lake smell was very prevalent. Now, Mr. Willardson has told me that there were a couple of complaints that came in over the weekend. So we met with, as I said, Mr. Pyle. What we came up with was we were going to offer a tour to his staff and anybody. Actually, if you want to tour the facility, call me. I gave you my card. And then also reporting monthly to the landfill council, which Mr. Willardson sits on, and also to yourselves as well in whatever capacity you want that to happen. And then when you have time, I know you cancel me, your study sessions are busy, but we have a presentation on the soil regeneration site and our odor control efforts, et cetera. So anyway, please, I'm going to be here through the public comment period. Please feel free to ask me questions and call me if anybody... if you have odor issues, if your constituents have odor issues, just give me my cell phone, and we'll do what we can to deal with them. We really are trying hard to fix this. I know it's been frustrating to you, and I don't blame you. We are trying. So thank you.
Mike Ritten.
Hello, council. Since 1980, you guys have been coming to my door and knocking on my door and asking me to vote for you, every one of you. I'm not from Utopia. I'm not a senator from Taylorsville. I'm not a milkman from Winter Dairy. I'm not a Cub Scout, and I'm not here to do public speaking in an American merit badge. But I applaud the gentleman back there because we have an issue in West Valley City. I don't even know this gentleman, and it's all about city creating rules and which are safe for the public. The rules that I see, parking, people are double bunking in trailer parks. Schools are being overloaded in one area, and yet next door, a street away, they're empty because of the boundaries, because the city will not enforce how many people live in a house, how many people can park on a road. I don't know how to address it, but I think the real question here is to look at ourselves and say, "How can we reduce crime? How can we make it safe for our city and our people, our residents that pay taxes, the people, me and you, that live next door to each other? How can we keep our streets empty of cars parked always?" And I can name areas where Academy of Parks used to be a pristine area where people wanted to go and bring their children to this school because of the STEM project. And now you have crime rate that's gone up over 200 percent in that area. Why? Why? West Valley City apparently, and I would assume that the developers went in and when they created a condominium, and it was supposed to be a retirement or 55 in a year older, and I don't know if some of you council people remember that, but now there's streets that are filled with parking all over the area. Their crime rate up in that area. People that build brand-new, expensive homes in that area want to move out because of the crime rate. People are parking in certain areas in that area where you have multiple families, different names, all living in one resident. It's a serious, serious problem that we have in this city. And you as council people, you need to do something about it. And I just hope that you'll take my message serious, because it's the city people, our residents, us that live here and have been here. We need the help, and we're not getting it from you. You want my vote? You come knocking at my door. Well, let me come knocking at your door, and I want you to give me help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. With that, is there anyone else here that was planning on speaking in our public comment period? Okay. Then with that, we'll turn to our Assistant City Manager, sitting in for our city manager tonight, Mr. Isaac. Any comments?
Not this evening. Thank you, sir.
Then to our council. Any comments from the council? Looks like not. Okay. A quiet night. With that then, we go to the next item on our agenda, item number eight, A, Resolution 17-140. This is to authorize the city to enter into a master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with U.S. Bancorp. This is with regards to a purchase and replacement of radios for use by our public safety employees. These radios, we first need to approve the actual financing of these to ensure we have a revenue stream for it, a way to purchase them, and then we'll deal with the actual purchase in our next resolution. And so these particular radios, we've been working on replacing about a fourth of them each year. And I'm just getting that up to make sure I remember. And yeah, when I want to push on it, then it doesn't respond. There we go. Actually, it's a total of $579,000 to replace all of these radios. And we get a great useful life out of them, 15 years. These rates on these are very low, 2.19 percent for a seven-year period. We'll pay for that on this lease. So we have some favorable terms in order to replace these radios to ensure that our public safety people have the right equipment. And some of our radios are very, very old. These will keep us up to date. That's very critical for public safety. That is the introduction to this resolution. Then to the council.
May I move for approval of Resolution 17-140?
Second.
Property before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to Resolution 17-141. This is on the same issue, but now that we have the funding in place, it's now to authorize them to enter into a purchase agreement with Motorola Solutions for these items for that amount. So with that introduction, then to the council.
May I move for approval of Resolution 17-141?
Second.
Property before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 17-142, to approve the purchase of a 24-passenger bus from the Lewis Bus Group. This will be for a total of $61,000. This is a vehicle that we're replacing, one that we've had for a number of years. It's used by our senior citizens, Harmon Senior Home, to transport senior citizens to and from activities. We look at how the repair history goes, and we are at the point where our people tell us that it is the time to replace that. And so this will authorize them to complete that purchase. That is the introduction to the issue to the council.
May I just note that this bus we're replacing is 20 years old, which is longer than many people could keep a car. And with that, a move for approval of Resolution 17-142.
Second.
Property before us, any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to Resolution 17-143. This is, we're authorizing the purchase of 31 vehicles from Young Ford, and we will have 21 police interceptor sedans, some supercabs for forensics and different individuals, some chassis that we will modify once we get them, and two explorers for a total of 31 vehicles, $832,167. And these are on a regular schedule where we replace them, and we select those for... And this includes though, an additional six vehicles beyond the regular replacement ones for some new officers who will be put in place. So that is the issue before us. Then to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 17-143.
Second.
Property before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have on our consent agenda, Resolution 17-144. It's only one item. This is the execution and recording of two delay agreements, and this is on Claiborne Avenue. There's property being developed there, but we delay the normal installation of curb and gutter and sidewalk, because to put it in without doing the whole street where we don't have them in that area would actually cause more problems than we would solve. Would actually cause some flooding problems. So we delay those until a later date when they're all done at the same time, hopefully. That is the introduction to the item to the council.
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, to the city recorder.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That completes our agenda for the evening. Any final comments from the council? Seeing none, final... Seeing none, final motion to end our meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no, passes unanimously. We're adjourned, thank you all for coming.